And Ms. Carrasco, if you want to proceed, please go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Please note interpretation services are available for today's meeting. To listen to interpretation of comments made in Spanish, please select the globe icon at the bottom of your screen that says in interpretation. You can then select English to listen to a live rendering of the comment or question. Buenos dias, nota hoy hay servicios de interpretación disponibles para la reunión para escuchar los comentarios comentarios realizados en español. Seleccione el icono del globo terráqueo en la parte inferior de la pantalla que dice interpretación. Luego puede seleccionar español para escuchar una interpretación en vivo del comentario o la pregunta. Gracias.
Thank you. All right. Good morning. It's nine oh three AM. This is the hearing in the matter of the administrative civil liability complaint against Jose Alvarez and Vicente Lopez. I'm Sam Vivens, the hearing officer assigned to this matter. With me today are several members of the AHO's staff. We have Nicole Mullin, Rebecca Stoltes, Kyle Woldridge, Skylar Anderson, and Cody Phillips here today. We also have two interpreters with us today, Jasmine Carrasco and Michael Soler. And a Spanish language language, excuse me, and a Spanish language and an English language channel. If you need Spanish translation services, please make sure you're in the Spanish language channel and you can refer to the guides we previously sent out as well as Ms. Carrasco's announcement. If you need help navigating there. This hearing is being conducted by Zoom webinar and it's also being broadcast live on the AHO YouTube channel. Both the audio and video are being recorded and we'll post files of this recording along with a Zoom generated transcript to the AHO FTP site. The YouTube recording will also be available on the AHO YouTube webpage. If at any time you're experiencing technical difficulties trying to communicate with us, please send an email to the AHO at admin HRG office at waterboard.ca.gov and we will be monitoring that email inbox today. With that, I'm looking at our waiting room and I see we have both of our respondents here as well as folks from the prosecution team. So let's just go ahead and get everybody in. Rebecca admitted as panelist and then we'll do appearances and then we'll see how we're going to proceed today. And Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Lopez, if you want to join the hearing, there's probably a button that's popping up on your respective screens that you will need to click. Except to be admitted as a panelist. That's the only way we'll we'll be able to hear you today.
You hear me?
Yes, Mr. Alvarez, I can hear you. Mr. Lopez appears to be declining the promotion. Mr. Lopez, you need to accept that to come into the to come into the hearing rooms, the panelists. Good. Well, I saw him in for a second.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, okay.
All right, you are in and and Mr. Lopez, if you need the the translation services, there is a Spanish language channel that you can enter by clicking down on the language interpretation tab. Oh. Okay, Mr. Anderson, I am I am confused. So, Mr. Lopez, it's here on my gallery feed.
Simplemente.
And I can I can hear him. His microphone is on, but he appears to still be an attendee. I think we need to get him in as a panelist.
Yeah.
He needs to accept the promotion. He keeps declining. So the the alternative that I chose was to just turn on his microphone.
Okay.
Maybe try to solve this.
All right, maybe maybe that will work, except Mr. Lopez, can you can you hear me and understand me?
Uh, si, es, no, es, ¿si me escucha?
Yes, I can. I can hear you. Yes. Let me, we're we're going to get beyond my Spanish language skills here pretty quickly. Mr. Soler or Ms. Carrasco, could one of you please make sure, can you, can one of you please give Mr. Lopez instructions for entering into the Spanish channel?
I have a problem on my iPad, so my son he go for the computer, so. Oh, ¿si me escucha? Hello?
In one of our, I I know he's asking if we could hear us in one of. Okay, is do we know which channel he's in on my team? Do we know if he's made it into the Spanish channel? I don't know how to tell. Okay, it sounds like it sounds like we don't have a way of telling whether Mr. Lopez is in the Spanish channel or not. All right. Okay, very good. All right, wonderful. And are you are you two able to communicate?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Then let's let's get started. Let's let's do appearances, please, first. So Ms. Jidkov, come on down.
Good morning. My name's Heather Jidkov. I'm the attorney for the prosecution team. Would you like me to introduce the members of the prosecution team or have them introduce themselves this morning?
If you could just briefly introduce them at this point, that would be great.
Sounds good. On the active participant page, we have Pete Hollingshead, Tara Morano, and Stormer Filer. And then we also have Robert Cervantes listening in through, I believe, just the general Zoom link today.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And Mr. Hollingshead is upside down. So you may want to address that at some point.
I see that. I'm working on it now. Sorry about that.
No worries. All right. And then for respondents, starting with Mr. Alvarez, can you come on camera and fit your appearance, please?
Um, how can I do this?
Do you have a, do you have a device with a camera, Mr. Alvarez?
Um, I I don't have that option here.
All right. Well, I guess it's not strictly necessary. We will, we will come back to how you're going to proceed in a moment, but I will I will take I will take that as your appearance, Mr. Alvarez. And and just to be clear, you are you are not represented by an attorney today. Is that correct?
Yes, um, we couldn't hire one due to the fact that we don't have the assets. And instead of using the assets for this purpose, we rather use the assets to analyze all violations with the county and the wildlife as well. And that's the reason why we couldn't use that funds for for attorney, but we're here to see how we can make this work.
Okay, um, we'll get to that in a minute. Thank you. Thank you for your appearance here, Mr. Alvarez.
Okay.
And then, uh, Mr. Lopez, I see you are here. Do you happen to have a device with a camera on it? Mr. Lopez, are you here?
Okay.
Great. And and I think you're in the Spanish channel, Mr. Lopez. So if it's easier for you to communicate in Spanish.
Say.
Yeah, please feel free to to speak in Spanish on the Spanish language channel and Ms. Carrasco will will translate for you. All right, you are you are both here. This is good. This is progress from the last time despite us continuing to have some some difficulty. So Mr. Alvarez, let me just start with you. The communication is easier with you here, and I think Mr. Lopez is still getting accustomed to things. So I'm going to address you first and then maybe we'll circle back to Mr. Lopez. But my understanding, you don't you don't have an attorney. You don't have any you didn't identify any witnesses for this hearing. So how is it that you intend to proceed today? I mean, this is, and I'll just say this is going to be an evidentiary hearing. Ms. Jidkov has brought, I believe, two witnesses to put their written testimony into the record. They'll be subject to cross-examination if you want to cross-examine them. What were your, what were your thoughts on how you'd like to proceed in this hearing today?
Yes, um, well, the only witness that I have right now is Vicente and of course myself. Well, in this case, I want to find out from attorney about the penalty of, I don't know if it's eighteen thousand. This penalty is due as for what purpose? What was the purpose of punishing us with the eighteen thousand dollars? What was that? The the punish of eighteen thousand four? What was the the main reason why? That's that's one of my questions to them. And the other question is for Mr. Pete is about the water diversion. Me or Vicente and I, we we don't believe that there was a water diversion. Okay, and I have, I have, I have write a statement myself and also I went to different places in Mendocino County that specialize on cannabis irrigation. And based on the facts that we, there's pictures that they took the time they actually did a search on the property. They have, I believe that was seven pools in a pond with so many gallons of water, maybe like a hundred and something. And according to the search warrant, there was like a six, once one thousand six hundred and forty-five plants. And based on the facts that the water used for those plants in the whole cycle is actually, they have more than enough. And I don't know why these people put those pumps in that place. I don't I don't know the reason based on Vicente told me there is enough water and they have, they never use the water that was already in the storage when they begin their their growing season. So that's one of the questions that I have for Mr. Pete. I mean, based on the facts that there's pumps and hoses doesn't really mean that it was, they did that. Or maybe they, maybe they tried, but they couldn't do to to the fact also of the the terrain, the terrain is very difficult to bring water from from the creek all the way to where the growing was. I mean, there is a lot of things that I consider very relevant to this fact of what a diversion. So I I have wrote the statement and 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 have evidence of the how many gallons those those swimming pools had at the time and also the irrigation companies that I went through, they also gave me a statement saying how much water a plant can use in a greenhouse based on the type of of irrigation system that was used at the time. I have a, I have done in my email. I don't know if I can send it to you or who I can send it to for review and consideration.
Okay, well, it's it's a little late to be sending me stuff. But I I basically what I'm understanding here is that you are you are disputing the prosecution team's allegations and you may have some cross-examination questions for Mr. Hollingshead. And we will we will get to how we want to present, want to present that. Mr. Lopez, I I want to give you the same opportunity to explain to me how you how you'd like to proceed in this hearing. Please go ahead.
Sí, buenos días. Este, primero quiero disculparme por todo lo que estamos pasando ahorita y lo que se hicieron ahí estas personas. Y también pues tratamos de agarrar un abogado, pero la verdad pues no. El dinero era mucho y mejor que decidimos ese dinero tratar de arreglar las cosas con con el wild, el wild fish and y el condado y y pues también yo pienso que la multa pienso que es un poco injusta porque nosotros siempre hemos tratado de hacer todo lo que ellos nos dijeron. Y también pues yo chequé en el, en el como en abril o o marzo del veintitrés y las albercas estaban llenas. Primero fui en noviembre, del veintidós y ya como noviembre, diciembre y las albercas ya estaban un poco la mitad de lo que llovía. Después fui en marzo, marzo, abril, no recuerdo y estaba todo lleno de agua. Y yo nunca miré ninguna evidencia de estas personas que iban a tratar de sacar agua de del río. Y también yo pienso que a la mejora, no sé por qué hicieron eso. Y también yo miro el, yo pienso que a la mejora trataron de sacar el agua. Pero yo miro muy difícil para que hayan podido haber sacado agua como está el pitch del terreno. Y es muy lejos, son como unos mil pies. Y pues es lo que pienso.
Okay, um, so, Mr. Lopez, I I appreciate that. I mean, you you have the same problem with Mr. Alvarez in that you guys missed the deadline to to identify witness testimony that you would present. Are you, do you anticipate having cross-examination questions for the prosecution team's witnesses today?
¿Como, desculpa? No escuché bien.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Lopez, do you anticipate having questions for the prosecution team's witnesses today?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Okay. And Mr. Alvarez, the you mentioned that you would potentially have one one or one or more questions for at least Mr. Hollingshead today. Do you have a, do you have a sense of roughly how many or or how long you think your questioning will take?
Can you repeat that? It's it's breaking up.
Yes. Do you have a sense of how many or how long it will take you to question, ask your questions with Mr. Hollingshead today?
Um, so, the only questions I have is basically I got just reasonable doubts about the water diversion that that's it, that's about it. So we come to the conclusion that the only question I have is basically why the evidence shows and may suggest that they were trying or try or, but I don't think they did bring water to the top of the hill, of the hill. And also they have so much water enough for their season, for the cycle, the of their, of the, of the season of the growing season. So that's the only questions I have is basically it. So I don't think there they were water diversion. That's that's, I have some 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 good evidence that I don't know why I'm too late. But I I I have that evidence that suggests otherwise.
Okay, well, you're you're late because there was a hearing notice that was submitted in both Spanish and English that provided a deadline for you to identify rebuttal evidence and witnesses. I believe that was October twenty-third. That did not happen. That said, I'm 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 going to turn to Ms. Jidkov now.
Okay.
If we can figure out how to proceed in a way that makes everybody feel good, given that we're all here and the ability to participate in cases like this is important. So, Ms. Jidkov, what I am hearing from at least Mr. Alvarez is that he has prepared a statement that he would like to present. In my view, it doesn't have evidentiary value, but I intend to allow him to present it. Presumably after you finish putting on your case in chief, and I will, you know, treat that as an opening statement or a policy statement. It will not, it will not be evidence. But he's also, you know, welcome to make legal arguments about the sufficiency of the prosecution team's case. And while I do not expect this to be a particularly lawyerly presentation, you know, I think we can, I think we can draw the draw the lines appropriately here at the AHO. Do you have any objection to proceeding in that fashion?
And in terms of the the process you laid out, I don't have any objections to Mr. Alvarez providing a policy statement or cross-examining our witnesses. In in terms of his reference to evidence that he would like to submit, we would object to that for the reasons you stated. He missed that deadline. He has had sufficient time to submit evidence and written testimony. We submitted our evidence back in July, July twenty-eighth. So he has had over three months to submit rebuttal evidence and written testimony. So we would object to that, but I I think many of his concerns could be addressed through cross-examination of our witnesses so long as he he asks questions and does not submit testimony through the form of questions. So I I think we can work through that as those questions are asked to try to keep it in that context. If if that's acceptable as well, but the prosecution team would object to him providing evidentiary statements and written evidence at this time.
Yeah, okay. Well, and that's and that's my my feeling. So it sounds like we are aligned. So, good. We will, we will do that. I will also give Mr. Lopez the opportunity to to do the same thing on the same basis and with the same limitations. So here's how we're going to proceed. And this is for everybody. I'm going to give Ms. Jidkov an opportunity to make her opening statement. Once Ms. Jidkov's opening statement is complete, I'll invite her to to call her two witnesses. The witnesses may give a brief summary of their written testimony. And then we'll be subject to cross-examination. Once we're once we have completed the cross-examination, if any of both Mr. Hollingshead and Mr. Morano, we will proceed to the respondents. I will permit both respondents to make opening, opening slash policy statements. Those will not be treated as evidence. But we'll we'll take them into consideration as we prepare an order in this matter. So with that, Ms. Jidkov, you ready to proceed?
I'm ready.
All right. The floor is yours for an opening.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Vivens. We are here today to discuss the administrative administrative civil liability complaint that was issued to Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Lopez, who will collectively be referred to today as the diverters. Testifying on behalf of the prosecution team will be Mr. Hollingshead and Mr. Morano. Mr. Hollingshead will describe his inspections of the diverters' property on which unauthorized canvas cultivation activities were observed during inspections conducted on two consecutive years. Mr. Hollingshead will detail his observations that substantiate each violation alleged in the canvas, each violation alleged of the canvas cultivation policy, terms, and requirements, as well as the diversion and use of water for canvas cultivation, for which a license from the Department of Canvas Control was required but not obtained. Mr. Morano's testimony will then describe the factors considered in determining the proposed liability amount contained in the complaint, which will include a discussion of potential for harm and the diverters' corrective actions. Specifically, why actions taken after the fact do not alleviate the harm or potential for harm that existed on the days of inspection, which are the basis of the alleged violations. Based on those violations and the testimony you all hear today, the prosecution team maintains that the proposed liability amount of eighteen thousand five hundred is appropriate. That concludes my opening statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jidkov. Are you ready to call your first witness?
Yes, I am.
All right, please do so. I will administer the oath and then he can provide a summary of his written testimony.
Thank you. Our first witness will be Mr. Hollingshead.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Hollingshead.
Good morning, Mr. Vivens.
Could you please raise your right hand and and we'll administer the oath? Do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And you can proceed with providing a summary of your written testimony.
Heather, is this the section where we're going over the presentation?
Yes. Would it be possible to pull up PT Exhibit sixty-eight at this time? That contains our presentation.
Yeah, then and and Ms. Mullin, I should I should have said this at the outset. Ms. Mullin will be handling the slides today. So you can just ask her, the witnesses and the attorneys can ask her just directly to pull up exhibits that have been submitted. Mr. Morano, while Ms. Mullin is doing that, it appears you have a question.
Morning. Just as a formality, Mr. Hollingshead and my testimonies together, and I know you swore in, Mr. Hollingshead. I was wondering if you wanted to do the same.
Oh, if you'd like to, the panel, you'd like to present in the panel, is that the idea? I was going to take you sequentially, but no objection.
Yeah, I will do it however you'd want. I just, yeah, I just asking if that's what you would want to do now or reserve that until after Mr. Hollingshead's presentation.
I think, yes, I think given the unrepresented status of the of the respondents, I don't intend to complicate this with panel testimony. So we will, we will do you guys sequentially and I'll administer the oath when we get to your testimony. Um, so we will, we will do you guys sequentially and I'll administer the oath when we get to your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Morano.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Pete Hollingshead and I prepared PT Exhibit number sixty-two, which is my written testimony, and I affirm that the statements therein are true and correct. I'll be presenting the division's investigation history in the matter of the administrative civil liability complaint against Mr. Jose Alvarez and Mr. Vicente Lopez. Next slide, please. The cannabis cultivation policy became effective on December eighteenth of twenty seventeen, after approval by the Office of Administrative Law and was amended by the State Water Board on April sixteenth of twenty nineteen. The definition of cannabis cultivator and cannabis cultivation guides us to how we implement and enforce the policy. The definition of cultivator includes landowners, which is relevant in this case. Next slide, please. The property was purchased by the diverters on October ninth of twenty twenty in a fifty-fifty co-ownership capacity. The property is due east of Willets and Riparian to both Long Branch and Tomkai Creeks, the latter of which I observed the unauthorized diversion in. The property has been owned by the diverters at all times relevant to the violations alleged by the division. Next slide, please. The aerial image of the property on the left was taken on September twenty-fifth of twenty twenty, which is fourteen days prior to the diverters' purchase of the property. And the first evidence of brush clearing and grading on the property is captured in aerial imagery dated October eighteenth of twenty twenty, which is nine days after the diverters purchased the property. Next slide, please. The first evidence of greenhouse structures on the property is captured in aerial imagery dated April eighteenth of twenty twenty-one, and the image on the right is dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, five days after the first inspection, and it shows the greenhouses and pools as I observed them during that first inspection. Next slide, please. This is the topographic map I attached to the June eighth, twenty twenty-three Notice of Violation and Inspection Report. You'll see two surface water points of diversion, six points of storage and five places of use, one of which was for domestic use, and Point of Diversion Two was not active during the inspection. Next slide, please. Approximately sixty-five thousand gallons was the maximum water storage capacity on the property that was associated with Point of Diversion One and cannabis irrigation, and approximately thirty-nine thousand gallons associated with Point of Diversion One was actively stored on the property during the inspection. Next slide, please. This is the water diversion and use diagram I produced for the June eighth, twenty twenty-three Notice of Violation and Inspection Report. The main takeaway here is that Point of Diversion One diverted water from Tomkai Creek into Point of Storage One, where it was transferred throughout the property for cannabis irrigation and domestic use. Notably, Point of Storage Three stored commingled water for domestic purposes and to irrigate cannabis. Next slide, please.
Mr. Mr. Hollingshead, before, sorry, Ms. Mullen, can you go back one? I just will exercise my right to try to understand the schematic. Um, so Point of Diversion Two is off to the side and identifies the point of diversion to upstream storage, but there's, I don't see any lines connecting it to any of the, any of the points of storage or places of use in the same way that Point of Storage One is. So can you help me understand what's going on with Point of Diversion Two?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, Point of Diversion One was the main diversion on the property from Tomkai Creek. Point of Diversion Two was a spring feature that was, uh, excavated with a hand shovel and some plastic sheeting sitting in it, and it happened to be located very close to a secondary and tertiary pump. So at the bottom of the hill, at the creek, there is a electric pump powered by a generator. Slightly up the hill, there is a lift pump to continue pushing head up the hill, and then there's another lift pump, and the understanding is that Point of Diversion Two was used to prime those two lift pumps, not to actually divert water for cannabis irrigation at any volume that's considerable.
Oh, okay, okay. And so, so that was a, uh, and it was a spring diversion, correct? It was not, it was not from one of the creeks that are an issue.
Correct.
Um, okay, so when we're, when we're talking about, when we're, you know, considering the allegations here, it, it's, uh, it sounds like what we're we're really concerned about are the diversions from Point of Diversion One, is that fair?
That is correct. The violations alleged are only associated with Point of Diversion One.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me. All right, please.
You're welcome.
Continue.
Okay, next slide, please. Term sixty-six of the cannabis cultivation policy requires that diverters adhere to the numeric and narrative in-stream flow requirement, number four in section three, in which the policy establishes a forbearance period between April one and October thirty-one of the succeeding year, in which cannabis cultivators cannot divert surface water for cannabis irrigation. Next slide, please. During the June eighth of twenty twenty-three inspection, I observed that the intake for POD one was in Tomkai Creek, connected to a one horsepower pump on the bank of Tomkai Creek powered by a gasoline generator, plumbed to a secondary and tertiary electric pump to conveyor, convey water diverted at Point of Diversion One all the way up the hill to cannabis cultivation on the top of the ridge. By starting the generators, water would be pumped from Tomkai Creek to Point of Storage One, where it was further distributed for cannabis irrigation and domestic use, as we saw in the diversion diagram. The image on the right is the intakes emerged in Tomkai Creek prior to removing it, pointed to by an arrow, and the image on the left is a diversion infrastructure on the bank of Tomkai Creek consisting of polyethylene water supply lines and the electric pump powered by a nearby generator. Next slide, please. Term eighty-one requires cultivators to use separate water storage facilities to separate water used for cannabis and any other beneficial uses, or to otherwise quantify their water used for cannabis and other uses. Next slide, please. During the June eighth of twenty twenty-three inspection, I observed that Point of Diversion One supplied commingled water to Points of Use one through four for cannabis cultivation and Point of Use five for domestic use without separate measuring devices. No measuring devices were observed on the property on or near Point of Diversion One and the storage tanks or pools, or the water conveyance infrastructure between storage facilities and places of use. No diversion or use records have been provided by the diverter post-delivery of the inspection report on October third of twenty twenty-three. The top right image shows Pool Six of Point of Storage Three that supplied water for domestic use at the toilet and shower attached to the shed that you see on the bottom right, as well as the cannabis cultivation at Place of Use Four that you see at the bottom left. Next slide, please. Term eighty-two requires diverters to install and maintain a measuring device uh, to quantify their water diversion for cannabis irrigation and to maintain diversion records onsite to, to be made available by inter-agency review. Next slide, please. This image is of Point of Diversion One with an arrow pointing to the outlet water supply line where a measuring device would have been needed to be installed to quantify the diversion. I did not observe any diversion records or measuring devices during the inspection, and the diverters have not provided any diversion or use records since the inspection report was delivered. Next slide, please. Terms ninety-two and ninety-three pertain to water storage infrastructure. Specifically, term ninety-two requires diverters to install overflow prevention devices on their water storage infrastructure to prevent the overflow and waste of water. And term ninety-three requires diverters to maintain their storage infrastructure closed to the environment to prevent the entry and entrapment of wildlife. Next slide, please. During the June eighth, twenty twenty-three inspection, I observed ten violations of term ninety-two for the failure to implement overflow prevention on storage facilities and ten violations of term ninety-three for the failure to ensure water storage facilities were closed to the environment. Shown here is Point of Storage One, Pools one and two, without overflow prevention devices or coverings. Next slide, please. Shown here is Point of Storage Two, Pools three through five, without overflow prevention devices or coverings. Next slide, please. Shown here is Point of Storage Three, Pool Six, without an overflow prevention device or covering. Next slide, please. Shown here is Point of Storage Four, Tanks one through four, without overflow, overflow prevention devices or coverings. Next slide, please. Term ninety-eight requires cultivators to measure and maintain daily records of water used for cannabis irrigation. Next slide, please. Again, I did not observe any measuring devices or irrigation records on the property during the June eighth, twenty twenty-three inspection, and the irrigation records were not provided by the diverters after receipt to the inspection report. Shown here is water lines at each cannabis place of use, none of which had measuring devices installed. Next slide, please. Water Code Section eighteen forty-seven B four requires cultivators to obtain a Department of Cannabis Control or DCC license prior to cultivating at the scale that I observed during the June eighth of twenty twenty-three inspection. Next slide, please.
And maybe, Mr. Hollingshead, before you, you continue with your presentation, let me ask, the, the pictures that you're showing in this, uh, slideshow, and then the, I believe most of them are replicas of pictures in Exhibit, uh, PT ten. Who took those photos?
It is a combination of myself and a fellow staff member. Most of them are, are me.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. All right, please, please proceed.
So during the June eighth of twenty twenty-three inspection, I observed approximately one thousand six hundred and forty-five cannabis plants being cultivated in an approximately twenty-one thousand square foot area. Prior to the inspection, I searched the DCC license database and did not find an active or pending license for the diverters or the property, and this remains true today. Next slide, please. Here we have a brief timeline of the case thus far. I inspected the property on June eighth of twenty twenty-three. Mr. Alvarez received the Notice of Violation and Inspection Report on October third of twenty twenty-three. Between December of twenty twenty-three and May of twenty twenty-four, Mr. Alvarez submitted the necessary initial statements of diversion and use for Points of Diversion One and Two, as well as imagery documenting the decommissioning of those points of diversion in the coverings of Pools one, two, three, and five. Next slide, please. The second inspection occurred on August fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. This is the aerial map that I attached to the Notice of Violation and Inspection Report for the second inspection. The source of water during the ins, this inspection appeared to be hauled water. I observed eight points of storage, three places of use, and approximately a hundred and seventy-three plants onsite during the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four inspection. Next slide, please. Now going back in time a little bit, uh, I'd like to show some of the corrective action imagery submitted to the division by Mr. Alvarez on May first of twenty twenty-four, showing the covering of several pools on the property. Here is Point of Storage One, Pools one and two, with tarps stretched across the top of them to prevent the entry and entrapment of wildlife. Next slide, please. Here is Point of Storage Two, Pools three and five, with tarps stretched across their openings. Next slide, please. And here are my inspection photos of the same pools during the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four inspection. You will notice that the tarps had since failed, leaving the pools open to the environment once again. In total, I documented ten additional violations of term ninety-three during the second inspection. Shown here is Point of Storage One, Pools one and two, showing the damaged tarp in Pool Two sitting within the pool. Next slide, please. Shown here is Point of Storage Two, Pools four and five, both with tarps dismantled and not covering the tops of the pools. Pool Three had since collapsed and is not shown here.
And maybe before we move on, Mr. Hollingshead, I don't, I don't see any water being stored in those pools, and I, I gather that Mr. Alvarez at least told you and sent pictures documenting the removal of Point of Diversion One and Point of Diversion Two. So if the, if the points of diversion were in fact dismantled and there's no water being stored in those pools, um, what is the problem here in August twenty twenty-four?
Well, uh, two things. Can, can we go back one slide, please? You'll see that POS one, Pool Number Two, does have water in it. Uh, our corrective actions do require that, uh, water storage facilities that are decommissioned and no longer being diverted into still have to be maintained closed to the environment to, uh, prevent the entry and entrapment of wildlife.
Okay, thank you for that. Please carry on.
Okay, uh, can we go two slides ahead, please? Okay, uh, here is Point of Storage Three, Pool Number Six, without a cover. Next slide, please. And here are four two-hundred-and-seventy-five gallon tanks without lids or coverings that I observed during the second inspection, uh, named Points of Storage Four, Eight, and Nine. Next slide, please. This is Point of Storage Seven, Tank Five, as observed during the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four inspection, with an entrapped rodent floating in it. This is a great representation of why we enforce term ninety-three. Next slide, please. More to Mr. Bivens' point, uh, this is Water Code Set, or Cannabis Cultivation Policy, Term Ninety-four, which requires cultivators to retain documentation of hauled water and make such documentation available upon request. Next slide, please. Specifically to Term Ninety-four, no records or receipts of hauled water were found on the property during the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four inspection, and water hauling records were not provided by the diverters after receipt of the Notice of Violation Inspection Report. The image on the left is a mobile water pump that, uh, could be moved about the property and pump water out of a water hauling truck into water storage infrastructure for cannabis irrigation. The image on the right is of an open end of a hose found along the road. The other end of that hose is resting next to Point of Storage Seven, Tank Five, the tank with the rodent in it.
Okay, Mr. Hollingshead, um, how did you determine that the water source uh, was hauled water during the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four inspection?
Based on the evidence on site, there being no diversion, um, and no other water source on the property, there's no well, uh, personal infrastructure coming from either Long Branch or Tomkai Creek. And there was the pump in the image on the left, uh, with a hose that can connect to the other end of this hose on the right. And that would be used to move water from a truck along the road down to Points of Storage to irrigate cannabis.
And I guess if I'm remembering your schematic correctly, you know, this, this whole diversion system, um, there, there wasn't any separation between the system used for domestic purposes and the system used for, for cannabis irrigation. So how do we rule out the use of hauled water, um, for, for domestic use only?
The trailer that was used for domestic purposes in twenty twenty-three was vacant in twenty twenty-four, and there was no domestic use observed in twenty twenty-four during the second inspection. Also, the places of storage, like Point of Storage Seven with the rodent, and Points of Storage would be, uh, six and one, those were used specifically right next to cannabis grows.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. Uh, again, uh, Term Ninety-eight for twenty twenty-four, no measuring devices or irrigation records were observed onsite during the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four inspection, and irrigation records have not been provided by the diverters since receipt of the Notice of Violation and Inspection Report. Next slide, please. Continuing the timeline, the second inspection occurred on August fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. Mr. Alvarez provided us with Mr. Lopez's mailing address after that, so we mailed a copy of the Notice of Violation and Inspection Report to Mr. Lopez, followed with the issuance of the complaint on June fifth of twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. This, I won't go into it too This, I won't go into it too much, it is simply a slide as a summary for the violations observed during the two inspections. Next slide please. So continuing the timeline, post issuance of the complaint. In mid-June of twenty twenty five, we became aware of a language barrier and promptly had the complaint translated into Spanish and re-mailed it to Mr. Lopez. By July, Mr. Alvarez had submitted corrective action imagery documenting the removal of the pools. And I will now turn the presentation over to my program manager, Tara Morano.
All right, before we before we do that, um. I'm going to give uh Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Lopez the opportunity to cross-examine. You, Mr. Holling said, before we get to Mr. Marano's presentation, so um. Let's start, let's go ahead and take this uh slideshow down for the moment, please, Ms. Mullin. And actually, before we get to Mr. Alvarez and and Mr. Lopez. Mr. Holling said, I I have some questions. About how the prosecution team decided to. Alleged a single day of violation for purposes of the ACL complaint. Uh, are those questions best directed at you or Ms. Marano?
Um, I think both of us could answer them. Um, I could give it a shot if you like, really.
Let me, let me, let me, let me ask you the question. I mean, I'm just looking at the ACL and, you know, so for example, um. Violation five, this is the the egg opening and and entrapment of wildlife issue. Um, and there were. As I understand the ACL, the violations were observed on two inspections. Um. And, you know, there's a fairly lengthy timeline in between those those two inspections, so how how did staff uh? Make the determination that it was appropriate to allege only a single day of violation?
On my end, as the environmental scientist going out and doing these inspections, I only observed those. Storage facilities without a covering or overflow prevention on the day of inspection. Um, so my evidence is only reflected by a single day during each inspection. Uh, therefore, we did not pursue continuing days without firm evidence of imagery on the property.
Well, well, wait, I'm I'm sorry, because I I don't I don't understand, because. I mean, you conducted two two inspections, right? June eighth twenty twenty three and August fifteenth twenty twenty four. Um, oh, okay, I see, and you're alleging you're alleging a violation, a single day of violation for each tank that was in violation of term ninety three. During each inspection, so I guess I'm confused. Are there two days of violation, one associated with each inspection, or are you combining the two to allege a single day?
Correct, uh, so the 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 first statement is correct. So there's there's one set of violations from the first inspection and then a separate set of violations for the second inspection.
Okay, very good. And let me just see if there's another. See, and I may end up asking this of this to Marano when we when we get there, but I think that. That helps me for now. Um, okay, with that, let's uh move to cross-examination, uh, and we'll start with Mr. Alvarez. Mr. Alvarez, do you have questions for Mr. Hollingshead?
Yes, well, um, you know, at the time in twenty twenty three, um, we went through a lot of hassles, uh, because we have.
Mr. Mr. Alvarez, let me, let me, let me stop you there.
Okay.
There's a, there's a. Procedure by, you know, which you've got to, which you've got to do this, and you can't, you can't testify while you're. Cross-examining Mr. Hollingshead, so you you need to, you need to just ask him questions without preliminary commentary.
Okay, um, no, it's just, it's just that diversion, uh, what's driving me crazy uh in understanding. Um, since uh all the water stored on those uh swimming pools and pond, it's from rainfall. And um, that's, that's actually the only, the only thing I have.
Okay, let me, let me, I will, I will formulate that into a question, Jidkoff, you do, you do.
Okay.
Object, so Mr. Hollings said, how did, how did you rule? Out the possibility that the pools were filled by rainfall as opposed to water diverted from Tom Key Creek and conducting your inspection?
Sure, um, I also performed a water diversion and use analysis, um, using peer-reviewed research. That takes into consideration the volume of water used to irrigate cannabis. Um, we use the most conservative value of two and a half gallons per day. Given that there was cannabis plants outdoors and in greenhouses, um, and. Uh, things like no mulch to retain water, that sort of thing. We still went with the most conservative volume of two and a half gallons per plant per day. And based on that analysis, they would not have enough water. From the beginning of the growing season to the end of the growing season stored in their storage infrastructure. And they would have to refill those storage tanks at some point. Those storage tanks happened to be plumbed to point of diversion one, and that's how I made my conclusion.
Okay, and did you, did you submit that irrigation duty analysis as an exhibit with your testimony?
It is embedded in my first inspection report and notice violation.
Okay, and what what num- what exhibit number is that?
That would be.
Exhibit nine.
Exhibit nine, thank you, okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Alvarez, I I. I hope that was, I hope my formulation of your thought there into a question was helpful. Do you have any other questions for Mr. Hollingshead?
So um, argument is um, based on the facts that he uh just explained. Um, the drip works irrigation company, they said, uh, plant most. Water can be used during the life cycle is thirty three, thirty forty gallons of water.
I'm going to object to uh testimony and not a question.
Yes, yes, not a question. Mr. Mr. Alvarez, I I understand, I understand that you have an argument. You'd like to make, but now is now is not the time. Do you have a a question for Mr. Hollingshead? About his testimony or any other?
No, that's basically, that's basically it. My questions will be the same uh in in terms of understanding the method used. Um, for this investigation, that's, that's about it. That's, that's, so.
Okay, you know, that's, that's good, Mr. Alvarez. What what questions do you have about? The methodology Mr. Hollings said used to conduct the investigation?
Um. He just said, um, that two point five uh gallons of water, um, i- it's a question that I have, uh. Is that for greenhouse outdoor? Because the numbers don't match in terms of my investigation, that's it, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or they, mm?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to thank you for your indulgence, Jidkoff. I'm going to uh try to, try to. Formulate that into a, into a question for the, for the record, so. Actually, we'll, we'll just start here. So Mr. Hollings said, how did you? Arrive at the determination that the um. Uh, water requirements for the cannabis grown on the subject property was uh what, two and a half gallons per plant?
Um, we use peer-reviewed research, specifically a journal article produced and written by Bauer et al. Um, I can get that pulled up if need be. But in that research, through a sample of cannabis cultivators across the North Coast. Um. There was reported water usage between two and a half and five gallons of water per day. Uh. Depending on how the cannabis was grown, what watering system. Many factors, and just to be conservative, uh, my section, cannabis enforcement section. Always goes with the two and a half gallon per plant per day to be conservative.
So in other words, you you had a range based on. The literature which you were aware, the range was from two and a half to five gallons per day, and you you simply selected the lowest end of the range and conducted your analysis?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Um, are there? Are there differences in the irrigation duties of cannabis plants grown in greenhouse greenhouse conditions versus outdoor condition?
There surely is. I can't explain those to you right now without the literature in front of me. And Mr. Alvarez's property had, and Mr. Lopez's property had cannabis cultivated. Outdoors and in greenhouses, and we just lumped all that in with a very conservative two and a half gallons per plant per day.
Okay, is it, in the, in the literature that you reviewed, I think you said it was Bauer et al.
Correct.
Um, in in Bauer et al. Did the debt, well, the the Bauer et al paper you relied on in conducting your analysis. Um. Dilydeate how the irrigation requirements between indoor and outdoor grows would be differ?
Believe it did. Um, it's been a little while since I looked at Bauer at all. Let me get this pulled up.
And while you're doing that, Mr. Hollingshead, just to be clear, you, I. I don't believe you submitted that report with your testimony, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I will let you pull that up and uh and let me know if there's a. Distinction in Bauer et al between indoor and outdoor grown cannabis for purposes of station duty.
Hey, so through Bauer et al's literature review, a survey conducted by Wilson et al in twenty nineteen reports the water usage of outdoor cannabis cultivation in California is. Five and a half gallons per plant per day. And uh. In August, it's five point one gallons per plant per day. The indoor cultivation, water consumption. Is two and a half to two point eight gallons per plant per day in August and September. However, the application rates are very close to outdoor application, says Wilson et al, twenty nineteen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hollingshead.
Welcome.
All right, Mr. Alvarez, I hope, I hope that was helpful. Are there, do you have any other? Questions for Mr. Hollingshead?
He he is, um, he mentioned that um there were indoor and outdoor. Uh, from my understanding, in twenty three, there was only greenhouse and not a outdoor. In twenty fifteen. But um, August fifteenth, um, I I am not, um, I'm the owner of the parcel, but I was not. Allow anyone to grow, it's something that I, we don't know what's going on at the time, so my question says, um. It's uh, wh- what type of irrigation was used in twenty twenty third? And um. Also, uh, my question for him is, um. How much water uh those a drip system use, because he he is saying in general. Um, and that's not what I was taught, uh. Uh, when I went to the irrigation place, they explained it was, was the difference between one and another, and it's.
I'm going to object again as you are providing testimony. I think you asked your question, and we can have Mr. Hollingshead try to address that question.
Sustained, I'm going to, I I think you asked a number of questions, and I understand we. Trying to do it hard for people who are not attorneys to. Do this in the way we expect, so I will, I will try to. It, I saw at least three, three questions there, so I'm gonna try and break this up for you, Mr. Hollingshead, and we'll, we'll get through it, um. So, first of all, did you observe cannabis being grown outdoors on the subject property during the twenty twenty three inspection?
I did. Place of use two consisted of two outdoor grows.
Okay, and approximately how many uh individual plants were in those two outdoor grows?
I can tell you exactly, just give me one moment. Between the two outdoor grows, it was ninety five cannabis plants.
Okay, ninety ninety five individual cannabis plants, and. What method? By by what method did you observe those outdoor plants from being irrigated?
Hand-watering. There was an open polyethylene water supply line resting next to those places of use. So it's just a black pipe sitting right there, moved but from plant to plant by hand. And the cannabis irrigated in the uh greenhouses was irrigated with drip irrigation.
Okay, and um. Based on your, either your. Experience or. Um. Study of irrigation duties for uh indoor and outdoor. Uh cannabis. Growing operations, is there a difference between how much water is required? Uh, for irrigation is between the hand-watering and the drip irrigation system?
It all comes down to the method, so it's difficult to make a firm statement in that regard. Hand-watering without a valve or without a uh like a spray nozzle on the end of a hose. It's difficult to stop the flow of water when you're moving from plant to plant, thus yielding uh. Water wasted on the ground, not actually used to irrigate cannabis, but to move from uh growing pot to growing pot. Um. So in my experience, I I would say that hand-watering uses more water than drip irrigation.
Okay, so in other words, hand, hand-watering is a less efficient um irrigation method uh than drip irrigation, that's your question?
It's also more. It, it's much easier to. Regulate how much water is being given to each plant. When you're using drip irrigation, you have a known pressure of the system, you have a timer that opens a valve for a known amount of time. And therefore, drip irrigation is much more easy to quantify how much water is being used, whereas. Hand-watering, you fill it up until it seems like it's had enough, and then you move on.
Okay, and then just to go back for my my identification, Mr. Hollingshead, um. When you, when you talked about the. Two and a half gallons per day per plant irrigation duty, is that the amount, is that the amount of water that needs to be? Applied to the plant in order to sustain growth, or is that the amount? Of water that is actually taken up by the plant through that transpiration?
I believe that is the amount of water necessary to. I believe that is the amount of water necessary to be applied.
Okay.
I do not think this is a vapor transpiration numbers.
Okay, very good. Um, thank you. Mr. Alvarez, do you have any further questions for Mr. Hollingshead?
He, he is, uh, he, he mentioned, um, how many gallons of water? Um, it was probably in the storage from rainfall. I want to just confirm um, how many gallons was on the pan, on the pond? Um, and also from the seven swimming pools that he's just, I'm just, uh, asking that question because I see they may be a, um, misunderstanding of myself.
You, you don't, you, yeah, you don't need to explain why you're asking the question, Mr. Alvarez. Um, so Mr. Hollingshead, did you, did you under, understand that and can formulate an answer?
Yes, um, the only water that we're focusing on in the complaint is water diverted from point of diversion one. And if I remember correctly, that's, it was actively 39,000 gallons at the time of the first inspection. There was an offstream rainwater catchment pond on the property that was mostly mud. It was very dirty water, uh, very clearly brown in color. There was no water conveyance infrastructure associated with that offstream pond and the water stored in the pools was not brown in color. So I determined that water was not being used from this rainwater catchment pond that was on the property and instead water was being used from point of diversion one.
And how did you determine how much water was being stored in each storage facility when you conducted your inspection?
They measure, measuring the length, width, heights of the pools or the circumference and diameter of the pools, the tanks, those four tanks that were on the property, 275 gallon totes. We see those quite often and then measuring how full in inches each pool was. Therefore, measuring the maximum capacity of all those pools on the property and the active storage.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alvarez, any other questions for Mr. Hollingshead?
No, that's, that's it for right now, um.
You will, you will have an opportunity to, you know, make a, make a statement with argument, um, after the conclusion of the prosecution team's case in chief and, you know, to the extent you want to rely on the answers that you elicited on prosecution examination, you know, I think that's, that's appropriate. So thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you.
We'll stop there. Mr. Lopez, do you have questions for Mr. Hollingshead today?
This, uh, see? Same question?
Yes.
See, no más yo tengo una pregunta no más. Si él, a la mejor él ha mirado más cosas, si, si realmente él cree que pudieron subir el agua del, del río. Porque yo sí tengo la duda que el, el pitch, el pitch de esa colina es de, de ochenta, noventa grados. Y yo pienso que sí intentaron, pero yo tengo mis dudas que ellos hayan podido ver subido agua para arriba. Porque es demasiado el pitch que tiene la colina.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think I, I understand what we're, what Mr. Lopez is trying to do here. So let me see if I can reformulate, um, uh, to a question or series of questions. So Mr. Hollingshead, I kind of, I wish I, is actually, is there a, is there a, in the exhibits you submitted, Mr. Hollingshead, a map or a photograph, uh, that shows all the diversion and storage infrastructure?
Yeah, uh, it's in several locations, specifically with point of diversion one. There's imagery at the end of the inspection report titled PT zero nine. There is additional images labeled PT ten. And there are maps of the property with topographic lines in PT zero nine as well.
Okay, this, actually, this is helpful. So Ms. Mullen, can you please pull up exhibit PT zero nine and turn to page, PDF page 25, please? Okay, so Mr. Hollingshead, can you just describe what this map shows?
Absolutely. So to the east on Tom Kye Creek, we have point of diversion one. There is a generator associated with point of diversion one that had fuel in it and the intake for point of diversion one was in the creek. From there, water would be conveyed through a water supply line uphill. Twice up along the hill, you will see two tertiary lift pumps. Um, these are high torque pumps powered by another gasoline powered generator that had fuel in it. Um, you will see POD two, it's about the halfway point between point of storage one and POD one, at least as far as elevation is concerned. And the understanding is that point of diversion two was used to prime those two high lift pumps, uh, to, to convey that water uphill. Mr. Lopez is correct. It is a very steep hill and getting the water up the hill was only completed by the use of those two lift pumps in line.
Okay, and so, so just to be clear, there's a, there's a, i- if you walk from point of diversion one towards, let's say, point of storage two, you're walking steeply uphill?
Yes, very steep.
Okay, um, Ms. Mullen, can we go to PDF page 33 of this exhibit? And, um, Mr. Hollingshead, can you just describe what we're looking at in photo nine on PDF page 33 of exhibit PT zero nine?
Definitely. This is, uh, so if you're walking downhill from cultivation down to the point of diversion, this would be the first generator that you come across. It had fuel in it and two pumps, two electric pumps were plugged in to that generator.
Okay, and let's see, maybe Ms. Mullen, if we could, well, actually, no, I think, I think what we're talking about is the pitch now. So how did you, Mr. Hollingshead, given the, given the deepness of the hillside, um, of which water was being diverted from, or which alleged water was being diverted from Tom Key Creek up to the area of cultivation? How did you determine that the lift pump system, um, was sufficiently powerful to move water up that slope in quantity sufficient, uh, for the irrigation and the cannabis grow operation?
The conveyance of water up that very steep grade necessitated the two lift pumps. Typically, we do not see three pumps in line to get water uphill. Um, there's a certain amount of head that each pump can produce. And the two pumps on the hill appeared to be sufficient to get water from one elevation to the next, where it would then be pumped from that elevation up and into storage. Based on the evidence of the inspection, there is no other water source on site and all this infrastructure is present and in working condition.
Okay, understood. Um, Ms. Mullen, you can take this exhibit down for now at least. Okay, Mr. Lopez, I hope that, um, formulation of what I understood you to be wanting to ask Mr. Hollingshead was helpful. Do you have any other questions for Mr. Hollingshead?
No, está bien. Nomás era mi, mi cuestión era eso, nada más que yo, pues yo trabajo en construcción y y yo de la.
Okay, that's okay.
Sí, está bien.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Ms. Jidkoff, do you have any redirect for Mr. Hollingshead?
No, I don't have any questions for Mr. Hollingshead at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, with that, uh, let's take a, let's take a 10 minute break. We'll come back at 10:33 and we will, uh, pick up with Mr. Barra. Thank you. Thank you. It's ten thirty-three. So, go back on the record, Mr. Jidkoff, and Mr. Holling, Ms. Jidkoff, Mr. Hollingshead. And um, I have Mr. Alvarez and Shalopez here, and then Mr. Marano, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Good. All right, Ms. Jidkoff, uh, if you'd like to. Call your next witness and then I can administer the oath and he can provide a summary.
Yes, thank you. At this time, the prosecution team will call Mr. Marano.
Okay, um, Mr. Marano, do you swear affirm under penalty of perjury testimony you were about to give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good, and actually, we should make sure. That we get this and exhibit PT sixty-four is a true and correct copy of your written testimony?
It is.
Okay. Your witness, Mr. Jidkoff.
All right, if we could, please, Ms. Mullins, if we could please pull up PT exhibit sixty-eight, Mr. Marano will continue the presentation that's in that exhibit.
Great, thank you. If we can start on slide thirty-nine, please. Great. Um, my name is Tom Marano, I'm the program manager for uh that oversees our water rates cannabis uh enforcement section program. Again, I prepared the PT exhibit sixty-four and affirmed the statements and the documents are true or correct. In today's presentation, I will be discussing the division's administrative sub liability authority. And the Water Coast Section twenty-five point three factors considering determining the case liability amount. The Water Board has authority to impose administrative sub liability for violations of the cannabis policy pursuant to. Water Coast Section eighteen forty-seven eight-one and amount not to exceed five hundred dollars for violations listed in subdivision B. Which include violations of the cannabis policy. And uh diversion or use of water for cannabis cultivation for which a license is required but has not been obtained. Next slide, please. Assisting with Water Coast Section twenty-five point three, I considered all relevant circumstances for each violation. And included the extent of harm, uh, I'm sorry, which included the extent of harm. Term persistence, length of time, and corrective actions taken by the diverters to determine. The complaint's proposed penalty amount of eighteen thousand five hundred. The extent of harm caused by the violation and other relevant circumstances were the primary factors I considered. And the proposed penalty amount, and we'll discuss those in more details in the following slides. For the nature and persistence of the violations, I considered only the violation observed during the day of the inspections on June eighth, twenty twenty-three. And on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. For the length of time of the violations, uh, no continuing days of violations considered uh in a proposed liability amount. Although the diverters have taken corrective actions to address some of the divisions alleged violations, the diverters. Corrective actions taken post-inspection did not negate the violation at the time of the inspections. Uh, effects of the harm or other relevant factors I consider and determine their proposed penalty amount. Next slide, please.
Maybe before we go to the next slide, Mr. Marano, I'll ask you the, the same questions I had for Mr. Hollingshead about the. Uh, nature of persistence and, and length of time factors, so. Oh, and I'll just, I'll just tell you kind of how I, how I think about this. I mean, I, I can see there's a fairly lengthy. Timeline of engagement with uh the respondents between the issuance of a notice of violation. And ultimately, the complaint. It's my understanding that um. Cannabis was, at least according to your and Mr. Hollingshead testimony and the prosecution team's theory of the case, that cannabis was. Grown on the property. Uh, throughout that time period, is that correct?
Throughout the time period that we're considering for the violations on both uh and between both inspections?
Yes.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and um. There was. As be, there was no other. Water source to provide the irrigation of those plants other than. Either the hauled water that Mr. Hollingshead observed in the second, connection with the second inspection and the. Diversion, storage and distribution system that was observed in connection with the first inspection, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, so, the uh, the water source um. Uh, identified in the first inspection and then uh the water source documented during the second inspection are different. Um, during the second inspection, um, Mr. Hollingshead's observed uh that it was likely that uh hauled water is being used.
Correct. Yeah, that was my understanding, so that's what I'm, that's, that's what I'm trying to, to get at, so. Um. Do you? Do you have an understanding of whether there were any other potential water sources for the irrigation of. The cannabis plants on the property?
No, none other than those two uh sources identified during both inspections. During the twenty twenty-three inspection, only. Water from POD one, and then um, like uh Mr. Hollingshead had provided in testimony um. That POD two was used for um building hydraulic head to, to lift water up a hill. But POD one in twenty twenty-three was the water source, and then in twenty twenty-four, it appeared that um they were using hauled water. As a source of water for cultivation.
Do you have an understanding of when? The respondent stopped using POD one for irrigation purposes?
Um, not exactly, um, in communications that um. Uh, Mr. Hollingshead has had with Mr. Alvarez and, and Lopez, they both attest to never using water from POD one. Um, and obviously, at some point in time after uh law enforcement, um. You know, served a search warrant on the property in twenty twenty-three, I'm guessing um. Maybe the use of POD water or the diversion of water for use of cannabis cultivation at POD one that ceased sometime after that point. Uh, when exactly, I'm not sure. Um, information really wasn't provided by uh either diverters.
Okay, and so, was the, was the decision to allege only a. A single day of violation of this in these water sources based in part. Well, in whole or in part, on the inability to determine when the use of a particular water source. Ceased and another began?
Um. I guess in part, yes, um, there was a number of other factors uh that we considered. Um, and not alleging multiple days of violation, um, one was that we didn't know. Um, early on, uh, that Mr. Lopez was also a co-owner of the property. Um, so we wanted to make sure we provided sufficient notice to Mr. Lopez in the same way we did for Mr. Alvarez.
Okay, were there any other factors that influenced uh your decision to allege a single day of violation?
No, not that I can recall at this point, no.
Okay.
Other than just taking a very conservative approach and limiting um the violations to the scope of uh what we observed during um. The inspections on both days.
Okay, that's, that's helpful, um, and, you know, not, not necessarily trying to put you on the. Side here, but, you know, I read this complaint and sometimes I read other ones and wonder how the uh. How those decisions were made, so that's really all I'm, all I'm trying to get at. Um, you can proceed with uh, with your summary of, of the testimony, Mr. Marano, thank you.
Um. Let's see, we're on slide uh forty-one. Okay, so the um extent of harm caused by the violations include. Uh, de- decrease stream flow, reduce hydrologic uh connectivity. Streamy water events, impacts to downstream benefits used to the water, or to senior priority upright diverters. And deprives the division of critical data required for resource planning, uh forecasting water demand. Protection of public trust uh resources. And the division's ability to ensure all waters put to beneficial use without the waste or unreasonable use of water and directly harms the legal market. And the health and safety of the consumer. Uh, next slide, please. Other factors I considered, um, the length of time that the unlicensed illegal cannabis cultivation activities have taken place on the property. Based on um available aerial imagery that predates um the June eighth, twenty twenty-three inspection. Um, the, the divers were caught twice illegally um cultivating cannabis on June eighth, twenty twenty-three and continued the following year on August fifteenth. Twenty twenty-four. Um. There's no evidence that the diverters have taken steps to comply with existing state law or. Local regulatory agencies to cultivate cannabis legally. And the diverters have gained an unfair economic advantage over those cultivators who voluntarily comply with the regulatory uh requirements. Administrative sub liability should be imposed to deter um those who divert water illegally. Uh, for illegal cannabis cultivation activities and to eliminate the unfair economic advantage. Next slide, please. I think we're office side. Um, there we go. Um. For the proposed liability amounts, um, one day of violation is alleged for violations one, two, three, six, and eight. Or a proposed liability amount of five hundred dollars per violation. Um, violation four, ten violations at five hundred dollars per violation are alleged for a total proposed liability amount of five. Five thousand dollars. And then uh violation five, twenty violations at five hundred dollars per violation are alleged for a total proposed liability amount of ten thousand dollars. Violation seven, um, two violations at five hundred dollars per violation are alleged for a total proposed liability amount of a thousand. Um. Based on the facts um presented today and for the supported. And the evidence submitted into the record, the prosecution team recommends the administrative hearing office issue an order imposing liability in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred. And this concludes the prosecution team's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, I've just, I want to make sure I understand this slide, and, and thank you, Ms. Marano, so I will, I will. Exercise my right to ask a couple questions before I turn to the respondent, so. Looking at violation four here, failure to install overflow prevention device. And uh, the prosecution team is alleging and rec- and recommending a, a penalty based on um ten. Ten violations, and. My. Understanding is that that is based on five points of storage. Uh, multiplied by the two days of inspection in which uh no. Um, overflow prevention device was observed. My understanding correct?
Um. I have to defer to the specifics on, on which tanks they applied to, but yes, it's for um. Tanks observed during both inspections without the overflow prevention device installed.
Okay, and, and Mr. Hollingshead, I will, I will, I see your hand is up, and maybe you can help clarify.
Certainly, so for violation number four, term ninety-two, there's ten violations from only the twenty twenty-three inspection. Uh, we did not allege term ninety-two for the twenty twenty-four inspection. Typically, we enforce term ninety-two to prevent overflow and runoff from a surface water source. And we don't typically enforce that for water hauling. And violation number five, term ninety-three, there is ten violations from the twenty twenty-three inspection. And then ten violations for the twenty twenty-four inspection. Specifically for the failure to secure tank openings. Does that clarify?
Sort of, I guess I'm just with, let's, let's just start with violation four and then we'll, we'll get to violation five, so um. I'm thinking about. Five points of storage, is that where, well, actually, let's clarify that, where did, where in your opinion? Did overflow prevention devices need to be installed?
At each piece of water storage infrastructure, so that'd be each pool and each tank. So while there's five points of storage, there's ten tanks, each point of storage is made up of multiple. Pieces of storage infrastructure, so point of storage one, for example, is made up of two pools. Point of storage two is made up of three pools. Point of storage four is four tanks.
Okay, I see, so, so within the five, within the five, are there five points of storage? One, two, three, four, five, okay, so within the five points of storage, there are multiple either pools or. Water receptacles. Adding up to, we'll call, we'll just call them receptacles, adding up to a total of ten receptacles across the five-point storage.
That is correct.
Okay, and it's the, like, prosecution. Teams allegation that each one of those, each one of those receptacles. Required an overflow prevention device under term ninety-two.
The way it was plumbed during the inspection, that is correct.
Okay, and so then, when, now, now we'll get to violation five, so we have the same, well, actually, is it the. Is it your opinion, Mr. Hollingshead, that each of those. Ten receptacles were also required under term ninety-three to have secure, to have secured openings?
Yes, the same receptacles received. Term ninety-three violations.
Okay, and so there are, there are ten, ten total receptacles across the five points of storage. Multiplied by. Two separate inspections to get a total number of violations of twenty, correct?
Yes, for term ninety-three, that's correct.
Okay, that, that helps me a lot, thank you, um. Okay, uh, let's take this down, please, Ms. Mullins. And Mr. Alvarez, do you have questions for Mr. Marano?
I, I don't know if this is a question or not, but um, the, the, the reason, okay, he mentioned the, 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 the timeline. Um, or, or timeframe between um, the incident and when I fix it, so. I was working, or we were working with the county wildlife. And um.
Okay, Mr.. I'm going to anticipate the Jidkoff's objection, which you don't need to make. Um, which is, you've got to, you've got to ask, you've got to ask a question, you can't, you can't testify.
Okay. Okay, on, 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 my question is. On, on, on those violations and the amount of money, it's, it's, it's not. I don't know how, how can I, I, I say this without not being a question, so it's, it's ridiculous, it's just not. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't get it.
Well, it's, it's, it's not ridiculous, it's just hard, you. It's hard if you've never done it before, and that's why frankly, I'm giving you a fair amount of help.
Mm-hmm.
What you need to do, and, and I will continue to help you try to do this, is. To elicit the facts from Mr. Marano. Um. That you need to support the argument that you want to make. Without making the argument while you ask the, without, while you ask the question, so. I'm, I'm going to be a little bit unconventional here and. Allow you to tell me what the argument you want to make is, and then we'll see if there's a way to formulate that into a question.
He, he is, um, it, it's all about, um. That rainfall, he's not taking in consideration the rainfall. Um. Into this, most likely, everything is just on facts, evidence that he saw at the time of inspection. That's basically, that's my only concern I have. That's basically, that's my only concern I have based on. On facts, so I don't know if you get this.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me, I, no, I, I think I understand. Where you're, where you're trying to go, so, Mr. Morano, and in calculating the penalty. For the recommended penalty, how did you rule out that the? Water you observed in, or that Mr. Hollings had observed in the various. Tanks on the property was due to diversions. Or rainfall.
Um, I don't want to speak for Mr. Hollings head, but I mean, based on the, the investigation that he did and the materials that he provided that I reviewed. Um, there was no evidence to suggest that there was any other water source other than um divergence of water from P O D one. Now, if the comment or the question is pertaining to maybe the uh the pools. Um, could there be rainfall that um? Partially filled it, um, because there was no covers on it, yeah, of course, there could be, would it, um? Is that likely the only source of water? No, because of what Mr. Holling has documented in terms of the water conveyance all connected. And uh with the ability and providing water to fill those pools. Um, so we based our assessments and uh the proposed liability amounts based on that information collected by Mr. Hollings said.
Okay, and, and let's assume, let's just assume for the sake of argument that some of the water. In the pools or the tanks is attributable to rainfall rather than diversions uh from, from Tomkey Creek. Would the presence of water, uh, would the presence of collected rainfall change? Um, the recommended penalty or the appropriateness of the recommended penalty?
So, I, I, I'm not sure if I understand the question, but if you're asking if all water was from rainfall, would that change? The recommended penalty?
No, I'm asking, let's, let's just say, let's just say for the sake of argument that, you know, in any given tank. Half of the water that was observed in the tank was rainfall, was attributable to rainfall. Would? That what, would that? Amount of collected rainfall, if you could, you know, attribute it to that, change the amount of the recommended penalty in this case?
It would not.
And why is that?
Um, because they're diverting water from a surface water source, uh, even if it's commingled water.
Right, and so, in other words, in other word, that it, the, the quantity of water. Diverted from Tomkey Creek isn't relevant to. Calculating a, a penalty in this case, correct?
That's correct, um, the frequency though can play into. You know, how often are they diverting water uh from Takai Creek can play into uh. Um, elevating, let's say, um, a policy violation.
Right, I mean, it's my, it's my understanding at least that the, that the potential penalty is associated with it's are based on days of violation. Not on quantity of water diverted. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Holling said, I'm, I'm gonna allow you to chime in if you have something to offer on that point, go ahead.
Just to piggyback off of what Mr. Morano is saying. Based on the cannabis consumptive water demand analysis that I performed. At the conservative volume of two and a half gallons per plant per day. The maximum number of days that they'd be able to irrigate. For one thousand six hundred and forty five plants would be roughly sixteen days, so unless it had rained. Significantly enough to fill those pools within sixteen days of the June inspection. Water must have come from elsewhere.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alvarez, do you have other questions for Mr. Morano?
No, that's, that's about it, it's just uh. Just those facts that I just mentioned, um, even though I, I am not. Um. You know, eh, uh, uh, that's it, that's about it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Lopez, do you have questions for Mr. Morano?
No, no más se me hace un poco injusto la, la multa por las, por los co. Fuerza de las albercas. Porque hicimos todo lo que ellos nos dijeron al principio cuando, cuando fueron.
Okay. Hang on, I'm, I'm good, I'm, yeah, Mr. Lopez, I will, you are going to get to make that argument in your statement very shortly. Um, so I will, I will hear it then, um. Thank you, Ms. Jidkov, do you have any redirect questions for Mr. Morano?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right, so I think we have. Reached the point in our hearing process in which it's appropriate to hear. Um. Statements and arguments from the respondents, um, and again. I'm gonna, I'm going to give Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Lopez a lot of leeway to say what they would like. Uh, but it will not be treated as evidence, it is. Argument, and we'll, we'll take it that way, and um. Ms. Jidkov, I, I can, I can certainly uh draw, draw the distinction between what's appropriate for me to rely on and what's not, so let's, let's uh. Let's let them go unimpeded, and I will stop them if it gets too far afield, you're always welcome to object, but. I'm gonna give them some leeway, all right, Mr. Alvarez, would you like to um make a statement for the record today?
Um, yes, um, you know, I, I'm really apologize for, you know, for all these costs, I mean. We shouldn't be in this position right now, um, but as soon as we hear. What went on on the time, um, on the twenty, on year twenty twenty uh third. We immediately uh tried to remedy all, everything with everybody involved in this. Situation, and we tried to do our best, um. You know, uh, we didn't have the resources, which is money. And uh the handicap that we have was from the county. We tried to demolish everything, but they required a permit and the permit was so expensive. Um, we couldn't do anything, we tried to do as much we can to remedy all the violations and. Mister uh Pete can, can say that I was actually cleaning the property. Providing pictures, removing stuff out of the property, but uh at one point. Uh, we didn't have no funds, and uh in twenty twenty four. We didn't know what happened, I didn't, we never allowed anyone to grow any plants in the property, we have break-ins. Uh, that year, and we have break-ins this year as well, so um. It's a property that we, I, I go there only once a year, um. Vicente goes a little bit more than, than I, but uh we try to. Um, maintain clean as it is right now and uh hopefully free of any. Any uh growings, illegal growings on the property, but uh I wanted to apologize. For all these inconveniences that we basically caused to anyone involved, yes, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Lopez, do you have a um statement you'd like to make for the record?
Sí, pues también igual, ah. Disculpar todo, todo lo que está pasando ahorita de que yo, hm, hablamos con José y. Y la verdad, estamos, no sabemos qué fue lo que pasó, cómo llegamos a esto. Y también este, del veinticuatro también la verdad, nosotros. No supimos por qué esas personas se volvieron a meter. Yo voy a cada tres, cuatro meses, y yo fui antes de, de, de agosto. Y la verdad, yo, yo tuve un es, yo tuve una cita con un inspector de la, del condado. Como en, en, en base que fue en mayo. Y la verdad, yo no miré nada en el veinticuatro. Hasta que recibimos los, las notificaciones de ellos que habían ido otra vez a la propiedad. Y que habían encontrado otra vez que, que se habían metido a, a, a cultivar a o- otra vez. Y eso pues, eso sí, no, el veinticuatro, no, no, la verdad, no. No supimos qué fue lo que pasó allí. Y más que nada, como dice José, pues él, hemos tratado de arreglar siempre todo con el condado. Con wild fish ahorita. Y pues, el dinero es lo que pasa de que pues. Hemos hecho más, que seamos hacer todo más rápido, pero no tenemos el, el. El dinero para tratar de acabar y limpiar todo ya.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lopez. All right, unless anybody has anything else to bring up, I believe that concludes. Uh, our hearing for the day. Um, and I will say thank you to Mr. Hollingshead and Mr. Morano for being here to testify today and Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Lopez for. Um, your appearance as well. Um, I believe the next deadline uh on the calendar, which point this case will be. Submitted, um, is the deadline for parties to file, um, closing briefs and. Proposed orders, proposed order, that's December fifth, twenty twenty five, um, and I will. Encourage everyone to do that, you're not required to, but um you are encouraged to do so. Um, Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Lopez, do you have any? Questions for me about that deadline?
Um, so I don't know exactly what you're referring to, deadline or December ten, um, I'm not an attorney, but I'm trying to understand. Wh- wh- what do you, what do you mean by submitting?
Sure, sure, so, um. You will have received on, let me just see if I can find the date, roughly September eleventh, amended hearing notice. Uh, as a PDF document, um, that, you know, talks about how this case is supposed to proceed and what the issues are. And on page seven of that document. There is a table with hearing schedule and deadlines, the last item in that table is. Deadline for parties to file optional closing briefs, twenty pages or less, and proposed orders, um. And so there's two things you can do there, one is you can file. A closing brief that. You know, essentially argues based on the evidence uh in the record and. The specific uh regulatory provisions um that govern the violations and allegations in this case. Why? You should not be held liable um for the proposed administrative civil liability. Um, and you have a fair amount of leeway to, you know, say what you want in those closing briefs, and I will consider them and read them in developing. A proposed order, you also have the option of preparing a proposed order for my consideration. Um, I can use to help me draft the proposed order, that's kind of your, your, another chance for you to. Attempt to influence the outcome of this proceeding by. You know, drafting a, drafting a proposed order that says what you think it ought to say for me to consider, does that make sense?
Yes, who I need to submit it to?
You need to submit it to our, our office and copy the prosecution team, well, you need to copy Ms. Jidkov at least. Um, there is a service list in this matter, but you need to email that to. Um, admin HRG office at waterboards.ca.gov. And copy the number of the prosecution team on the service list. It needs to be in by December fifth of this year at eleven fifty nine PM or earlier. Um, and we will get that and we will consider it in preparing our, our order.
Okay.
Then again, you don't, you don't have to, and that, you know, I'm not gonna hold it against you if you don't submit anything, it's just an opportunity for you to. Um. You know, provide argument to influence. Our decision in this matter, Mr. Lopez, does that make sense to you?
Sí.
Very good, thank you. All right, so that's the next, and I think final deadline for an order issues. Does anyone else have any other issues they would like to raise before we adjourn for the day?
I have no additional issues to raise, thank you.
Thank you, does anyone on, on my team uh have any? Issues they'd like to raise or anything I have missed procedurally? Hearing done and seeing no one come off mute, um. I believe with that, that will conclude uh our proceedings for today, I will look forward to.
Pardon me?
Yes, Mr. Fowler.
You, you could correct my name, it is Stormer rather than Stormy, if you'd like to do that.
Well, I apologize for that, Mr. Fowler, we will, um. We will not be on the Zoom for very much longer, so, uh, oh, but look at that, Ms. Mullin, Ms. Dolph has fixed it, um. And should your name appear uh in an order, we'll make sure it's Stormer and it's not Stormy. Um, thank you. All right, with that, I think that concludes our uh proceeding for the day, uh, we adjourn, thank you all very much. Uh, for your presence and participation and patience with this process. Uh, and I will look forward to receiving your closing briefs and proposed orders, thank you very much.
Thank you.